Okay, you're on. Uh huh.
Good morning, welcome to the boardroom. This is the meeting of February 7th, 2006. We'll call to order. Can we begin with a roll call, Roberta?
Supervisor Michaels.
At this time, we have a moment of affirmation, and I'd like to just take this moment in recognition of Coretta Scott King. This morning in Atlanta, Georgia, the memorial service is underway, celebrating the life of Coretta Scott King. She left us on January 31st. Side by side with her husband, Martin Luther King, and for 40 years after his murder, through good times and bad, this gracious lady worked to fulfill America's promises of justice and equal rights for all people. She believed with her husband that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. She was a recipient of the Congressional Gold Medal for devoting her life to peaceful And let us join in a moment of silence in recognition of Coretta Scott King. Supervisor Long, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Then we have our minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? A motion and a second. Seeing no objections, that will pass, and now we'll go on to talking about our agenda review and Johnny Johnston. Do you have some changes for us?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a couple, and they're minor in nature. Item 25 should read John Nicole and Paul Ruffin instead of Tom Womack. Change in personnel. And item 32, the agenda title only, should have read SB 821. And lastly, there's a request for a continuance on item 34 to February 14th, 2006.
Okay, thank you. And I would imagine we need a motion on the continuance of that item? So do we have a motion on the changes for the agenda review? Got a motion and a second. No objections, John? Well, now move on to our consent items. Items 10 through 20 on the consent calendar. Got a motion and a second. No objections, Steve?
Okay, we have a unanimous vote then for the consent calendar. We'll go on now to our public comments. We have a few cards this morning. The citizens presenting items should be, who are speaking at public comments, should present items regarding county matters. And those are matters that are not on our agenda, but still within the purview of our Board of Supervisors. Our first public speaker card is Carol Dean Williams.
Carol Dean Williams, 60-year resident of Ventura. I have fully documented the public defender of Ventura County. I should add, I have fully documented his incompetence. The public defender of San Francisco is elected. The public defender of Ventura County is appointed. I asked two weeks ago why. I still have not got an answer to that. The American Bar Association has published a report that describes horrendous examples of incompetent lawyering by public defenders. 154 people were cleared by DNA evidence that had served 1,800 years in prison for crimes they did not commit. The report said that public defenders lack the inclination to provide effective representation. This board is going to have to address these concerns at one point or another.
Thank you very much. Our next public speaker is Lita Bieho. Good morning, Ms. Bieho.
The name is Lita Bieho, citizens from Moore Park. I'm conservator of my orphan nephew, Richard, who is chronically mentally ill.
Good morning, welcome to the boardroom. This is the meeting of February 7, 2006. A call to order. Can we begin with a roll call, Roberta?
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Long. Supervisor Flynn. And Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of affirmation, and I'd like to just take this moment to, in recognition of Coretta Scott King. This morning in Atlanta, Georgia, the memorial service is underway, celebrating the life of Coretta Scott King. She left us on January 31st. Side by side with her husband, Martin Luther King, and for forty years after his murder, through good times and bad, this gracious lady worked to fulfill America's promises of justice and equal rights for all people. She believed with her husband that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. She was a recipient of the Congressional Gold Medal for devoting her life to peaceful social change. And let us join in a moment of silence in recognition of Coretta Scott King. Thank you. Supervisor Long, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ten over heart, ready to begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Then we have our minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? A motion and a second. Seeing no objection, that will pass, and now we'll go on to talking about our agenda review and Johnny Johnston. Do you have some changes for us?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a couple, and they're minor in nature. Item 25 should read John Nicole and Paul Ruffin instead of Tom Womack. Change in personnel. And item 32, the agenda title only, should have read SB 821. And lastly, there's a request for a continuance on item 34 to February 14, 2006.
Okay, thank you. And do we, I would imagine we need a motion on the continuance of that item?
Okay.
Okay. Alrighty. So, do we have a motion on the changes for the agenda review?
Uh-uh.
Got a motion and a second. No objections, John? Unanimous then. We'll now move on to our consent items. Items 10 through 20 on the consent calendar.
Do we consent?
Got a motion and a second. No objections, Steve?
Okay, we have a unanimous vote then for the consent calendar. We'll go on now to our public comments. We have a few cards this morning. The citizens presenting items should be, who are speaking at public comments, should present items regarding county matters. And those are matters that are not on our agenda, but still within the purview of our Board of Supervisors. Our first public speaker card is Carol Dean Williams.
Carol Dean Williams, 60-year resident of Ventura. I have fully documented the public defender of Ventura County. I should add, I have fully documented his incompetence. The public defender of San Francisco is elected. The public defender of Ventura County is appointed. I asked two weeks ago, why? I still have not got an answer to that. The American Bar Association has published a report that describes horrendous examples of incompetent lawyering by public defenders. A hundred and fifty-four people were cleared by DNA evidence that had served 1,800 years in prison for crimes they did not commit. The report said that public defenders lack the inclination to provide effective representation. This board is going to have to address these concerns at one point or another. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next public speaker is Lita Bieho. Good morning, Ms. Bieho.
Good morning. The name is Lita Bieho, citizen from Moore Park. I'm conservator of my orphan nephew, Richard, who is chronically mentally ill. By this time, you have read already all the letters that I faxed. I'm sure you did. And if you did not, the latest one was yesterday. I have some copies here for you. My nephew is at present under Telecare Camarillo, a facility which we named before as Las Posadas. You know that, Mr. Flynn, we were there together. Las Posadas was built as a facility for the chronically mental ill here in Ventura, so the county can save money instead of our chronically mental ill being in the state hospital. In November, Patricia Thomas, the present director of the facility, told the parents and guardians of those living there that there will be just a name change, but the services will be the same, if not better, as there will be more staff. She lied. That was not the truth. The facility was changed into a board and care, which cannot be for the chronically mentally ill. These are the very vulnerable population of this county, and they cannot be by themselves, as already proven, but by what is happening now to my nephew. Mr. Flynn, how many times have you said that what we need in this county is more facilities like Las Posadas? Many, many times. And yet, how come that you allowed this facility to become a board and care? There's plenty of money allotted for the mentally ill. Bills for the mentally ill are easily, if not overwhelmingly passed, because people knew that this is the population who needs help. Proposition 63 was the, is just the recent example. Unfortunately, this money was not going for the mentally ill because of politicians and bureaucrats, poor mentally ill. They are so confused that they can't fight for themselves, and new leaders of this county once more neglected and failed them. The county transferred my nephew to that facility for the chronically mental ill from Camarillo State Hospital. I agreed to the transfer because the county signed an agreement with me that there will be the services that he was getting from the Camarillo State Hospital. And because of our support, my nephew will be okay. However, the county is now trying to get out from that agreement. Worse is that I'm being tricked to sign an amnesia agreement to that changed facility. How can that be when, that I have to sign an amnesia agreement when my nephew is already admitted there and had been residing there for eight years? This is because the facility has changed into board and care, no longer the same. What an insult to someone's intelligence. Most of you know me for years. I'm sad to, I'm, I'm already tired and wasted so much of my hard-earned money for this population, and especially for these coward parents or family members. I'm sad to say this, but I'm now just fighting for my nephew. I'm asking this county, therefore, to abide by the agreement we have when they transferred my nephew from the Camarillo State Hospital, because it is the legal and lawful thing to do pursuant to the laws of this country in taking care of our mental ill. If not, this individual, as you know very well, will do everything in my hand to protect our kid. Thank you. I'm still going back to the facility, because last time that I was there, my nephew complained of ache, and they have given him some pain reliever. But I think until now, they didn't even bother to find out what is the cause of that pain. And of course, my nephew is mentally ill. And he slashed his hand, and then he will get the blood and use it as, oh, I have an ink to write on. That is how chronically mentally ill are. Thank you very much for your time. And as usual, I'm glad that Mrs. Michaels is not here, because she might think again that I am embarrassment, and which is something makes me a little bit concerned, because when I was a student, my mentors, or even when I was in college, my mentors said, if you have something to be done, give it to Lita. When I was working, it's the same thing. Important matters are given to me to be taken care of. But since I became concerned of a mental ill, call me names, troublemaker, even maybe crazy.
Thank you for your com-
But am I? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your advocacy for your nephew. Our next speaker is Angela Angelica Camarena. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, the reason I'm, well, my name is Angelica Camarena, and I come from Fillmore. The reason that we are here today is to let you guys know what have we got accomplished, seeing you guys pass the Mental Health Initiative. And what we have come up with, we already came up with our mission, and it is get mental health services, including prevention and transformational delivery of services and residency, as well as treatment for youth in Fillmore, Peru, Barstow, and Natchez City. We came up with our motto, and our motto is making changes and efforts poco a poco, which, it is making changes and efforts little by little. We chose to do it in bilingual, because most of, most of Fillmore speaks Spanish, and not everyone speaks English. And we came up with their name, and our name is One Step Alabes, which is one step at a time. We chose to do that, because by people going to, taking advantage of the services, if we do get them in Fillmore, they'll be taking a step of getting better and making progress in their life. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Cecilia Magnana Araceli Avalos. Good morning.
My name is Cecilia Magnana, and this is Araceli Avalos, from Fillmore. We don't come to Ventura, Camarillo, Thousand Oaks, or Oxnard to get help, because most of us don't drive, we don't have our licenses, and there's no other way of transportation. Our parents work. And in Fillmore, what we want, that would transform mental health services are that, we want a center where there are lots of activities that promote mental health, and where the youth would like to go and hang out, and at the same time, get help.
Some of the activities that we think will be, oh wait, some, some of those activities that we think will be interesting and help kids with their mental health are a kitchen to prepare healthy snacks and have cooking classes, a study room, quite a place to read, and it's just, and a room with exercise equipment, have yoga classes and exercise classes where they could be provided, a game room with computers and board games, and a music room just to relax and listen to music. And a classroom just to have group counseling and support groups, and just an office for individual counseling, a place to go if you want to get, a place where you could go if you want to run away from your house, so you just could be there. We also need a van and drive, a driver for transportation for those youth and adults and family members with more serious needs for appointments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for coming down here, and your teacher, for really focusing on this and letting us hear exactly what you feel you need. And we had two, all the speakers this morning talking about Prop 63. Those funds haven't come yet, but once they do come, it'll be nice to be able to provide the extra services. Thank you for coming. Yes, Supervisor Flynn?
Let me congratulate you for coming this morning. Your testimony was very good, you did an excellent job, and hopefully, we can follow up with the issues that you identified.
And it will also be nice for you to see the fruits of your labor when the funds do come. That'll be good. Our next speaker then is Luis Manios.
Good morning. My name is Luis Manios. And I'm just here to tell you a little bit of what we've done since we started our committee. We have gone around our community and talked to churches and youth groups, and told them what we're doing and what our plan is, and how they could help us, and asking for their opinion, how we could help our community. We started developing a plan. A plan that would meet the needs of the youth in Fillmore and Peru. We meet about twice a month, talking about what we want, and keep, and we keep on working harder in our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have also a duet, Danielle and Maricela, also on the Mental Health Initiative. Danielle.
Good morning. My name's Maristela.
And my name's Danielle.
And we're from Fillmore, and we were thinking for part of our plan for the drop-in center is that we really want to have a mentoring program. And this is where a high school student will be paired up with a middle school or elementary school student, and they'll work with each other after school doing homework, and pretty much like, you know, playing games, reading together, and getting to know each other. And it'll be good, because the high school student will basically, because the child has been identified that they're in danger of becoming in gangs, and they just don't really have a good example in their life, and the high school student will provide that. They'll be there to set a good example and show them that, the good paths to follow.
Well, they don't have to be identified, you know. They can be ordinary kids, you know. If they want an activity to do, I mean, they can be in this program. We also want an adult, we also want adult mentors for our high school students, because, you know, we need an extra push too. I mean, we're, another part of our plan for developing a drop-in center for Fillmore and Peru is having, is having support groups such as suicide prevention, friendship, anger management, disorder, depression, and counseling, individual counseling, psychiatrists and psychologists for students that need help, you know, that they have problems with school, with their family, with all these little issues that I just mentioned. We want to also provide a comfortable environment for our students by also providing the same groups, support groups for their parents and their family members, so they can understand their children and just support them and their issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I hope that you guys are excellent examples for your friends, that maybe you can get some, do some volunteer work if we get some of those activities, that you can actually volunteer to help at those places too. Thank you for coming this morning. That ends our public comments. Supervisor Long?
Yeah, I'd like to, if I might, take a moment to thank you also, and certainly Lynn has led the, led this youth group, and working with them, helping them to understand that advocacy makes a difference, and the good work they're doing out in the community, meeting with the different groups, and speaking up to say what it is you'd like to see in the improvements in the mental health services in the community. That cross a lot of lines, in the sense of what you need for mentoring, and what you need to support one another, and what you need from adults. And I applaud your, your efforts. You really are speaking up, they're very active in the community and visible, and speaking to all the elected leaders. So, thank you for taking the time, and very good testimony this morning. Thank you. We'll continue to work with you on reaching those goals. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll go on to item nine on our agenda, and that's board comments. And if we start with Supervisor Flynn, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a presentation first, and then make my comments when I come back from the presentation. I'd like to call forward Karen Spates. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Karen. I'm going to present Karen Spates with a memory certificate. She just lost her husband, Robert, on January the 19th, 2006. And the reason for asking her to come here this morning is the volunteer work that she and her husband have done ever since I've known them, which is a long time. And just to think about the different things they've become involved with, every parade, strawberry festival, and most recently, Oxnard Community Concert Association did a performance the other night. And I could name probably fifteen other groups. They've always been there to volunteer. They must have made a dedication of her life, I'm going to spend 50% of my life as a volunteer, because that's the way I calculate it. So, we're so proud of, of them, and so sad that Robert is no longer with us. Both of them are always together, and I used to see them in the gym together. And they're such a viable pair, really to be proud of for the city of Oxnard, and actually the whole county of Ventura, to have two people like this, who simply think first about the community, and second about themselves. So, it's with those words, and I would name the, the volunteer groups they belong to, but it would take about a half an hour. So, I'm simply going to give this in memory to Karen. Karen, by the way, her name is, first name is K-A-R-I-N, and it's exactly the same as my middle name. So, we have some association here. Thank you, my dear.
Thank you, John.
We love you.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a hard time, I know, and we give you our best in this hard time. Our sympathy.
I just make a couple of comments.
Sure.
I think that it would be good if this board, on the subject of Fisherman's Wharf, would simply bring it into the public, and we discuss it in the public. And anyone who's given an application to do something at Fisherman's Wharf, to rebuild it, or whatever the assignment was, that they be allowed to come and make a presentation to the board, so that the whole community can be involved with it. So, I'd like the board members to consider that. And then, secondly, if you would adjourn in memory of the people on this list, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor Long, would you like to have some comments?
Sure, thank you. I'd like to start speaking about the dinner I attended Saturday night, the Apple of Excellence Awards in Camarillo. It's sponsored by the Camarillo Healthcare District, and it's their 11th annual, and it's a time they take to recognize people in the greater Camarillo community, in the health professionals who have made a contribution to the community. And we were honored as the county in two different respects. And the first one I'd like to speak about is the Fire Communications Center. It was honored and received the Support Staff Award for, for the Apple of Excellence in 2006. And in the write-up, it noted that the dispatchers at the Communication Center handled over 174,000 911 calls last year, 111,000 incidents, that included a variety of things, obviously, in that, in that professional dispatch response. The FCC dispatchers are certified as emergency medical dispatchers, and so during 2005, they provided pre-arrival instructions on 120 CPR incidents, choking, obstructed airways, instructions on 120 incidents, and pre-arrival instructions on childbirth delivery for 41 incidents. And the statements made by the Apple of Excellence trustee leadership spoke to the support provided by the dedicated men and women of the Ventura County Fire Department Fire Communication Center as being monumental and priceless. And we were pleased, I was very pleased to be there, Chief Roper was there, and, and his top management group, and in fact, Chief Pestering was there too, even in retirement. And this morning, we have Steve McClellan and Mel Smith from the Dispatch Communication Center, and this is the apple that is given to the awardees. It's very heavy, and it's, but it's significant- And this is the apple that is given to the awardee. It's very heavy and it's um, but it's a significant acknowledgement of our, our teams, our, our efforts and their good efforts in the community by um, the Apple of Excellence. And there were 265 people at this dinner, so they all got to hear what wonderful work our dispatch center does. So I wanted to thank them for being here this morning and acknowledge them publicly for receiving this Apple of Excellence Award. And I thank you gentlemen for being here. Another recipient on that same agenda, we have acknowledged in this boardroom, and that was uh, acknowledged by the Apple of Excellence Saturday night with Sergeant Stephen Rhodes. And he received the My Hero Award. He's our deputy sheriff who um, with his breath gave life to a two-year-old girl who was found at the bottom of a pool. And again, we, we, I believe have had Mr. Sergeant Rhodes in here acknowledging his 25 years of law enforcement, all of the outstanding work that he has done uh, as a law enforcement officer. But it was also a pleasure to have him acknowledged by the community and the young girl that he rescued was there and she was just delightful. It was just very heartwarming, very, a tearjerker when that award was presented. So it was a very wonderful evening and um, appreciation to the trustees of the Board of Directors of the Healthcare District for um, holding this um, Apple of Excellence Dinner to really acknowledge good people in the community. So that was, thank you again for being here. And I would also ask the board to adjourn in memory. I have um, a couple of folks I would like to speak specifically about. One is a um, one of our own Ventura County Deputy Sheriff, James, Michael James Houlihan. Passed away unexpectedly. Young man, graduate of Oxnard High School, served in the Air Force, 23 years. Served with Ventura County Sheriff's Department where he was a senior deputy sheriff. Actively involved in Assistant Scout Master of Boy Scout Troop 257. Member of the Sheriff's Association, the Ventura County Intelligence Unit in Southern California Outlaw Motorcycle Gang. Survived by, survived by his wife Lori and children Melissa, Christopher and Jessica. As I said, a, a young man, 49 years old, 48. Tragic, tragic loss for the family of our law enforcement officers. Also for um, Jack Nava, who I think we all share. And I, I imagine Supervisor Flynn also has acknowledgement for Jack. A Santa Paula resident, grew up and, and lived in uh, Santa Paula before moving to Ventura. Known by the countywide um, Latino community as an activist and um, he really brought great respect for Cesar Chavez in 2003 when he gathered the signatures that urged the Postal Service to issue a stamp in honor of the farmworker rights activists and successfully did so. He was credited as being the foundation for a lot of changes in the county, being nicknamed the Instigator. And just known and loved countywide. Remarkable man. Survived by his wife of over 40 years, Margaret, and children Danny, Yvonne, Jerry, Joe, numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And then I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of James Edward Miller Senior. Camarillo resident, devoted father, husband, grandfather, remembered for the way he, he had infectious sense of humor. He is, was the husband of Judy Miller, who worked in our CEO's office. Loving wife for 37 years of Judy. She was a management assistant, three in our CEO's office and, and our thoughts and prayers are with her. And just take a moment, as you did so beautifully this morning Supervisor Parks, in acknowledging the loss of Credit Cut Scott King. I'd also just take a moment to recognize and acknowledge the loss in our nation of Betty Friedan. The good work she did and what a monumental change she made for, for many women, but also for many men in our nation over the years and the work she did and remarkable woman. Founder of the National Organization for Women and the National Women's Political Caucus. And I think that wraps up comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett, do you have some comments?
I do. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I would share in the comments about um, two powerful and effective women that we lost in our country this past year. I mean, this past week. And um, my, the final thing I'd like to do is just very quickly read a letter that I received from Lori Scott. Lori Scott is one of the people who actually trains our respite care providers for respite care, but it's a very interesting letter. Uh, she's, I thought it started off, I thought it was just gonna be this little update. She says, "I'm happy to say that we now have 37 trained and cleared respite care providers that are serving 42 foster families at this point in time." That's up from two that we had three years ago. And our goal is to try to get to 75 families being served this year. So the next, and I thought, just a quick update and it's very encouraging. She says, "I myself became a foster parent 18 months ago because of seeing the need while I met with Trish Kavanaugh and talking during conversations I had with the many foster parents who enroll in the foster respite program. I have had five foster children live in my home in the last 18 months and I'm very happy to say that I'm adopting one of them. My adoption should be final next month. Because I'm a single parent and I work full-time training respite providers, I myself have required the help of respite care services." The funding that is available for respite as well as childcare through CDR is a blessing to foster parents who would otherwise not be able to provide a home for foster children. I had the real honor of speaking to the annual meeting of the foster parents this last Saturday at their annual recognition event. And you talk about a heartwarming program. This is, I, I've said it over and over again, if you touch the foster care program in this county, you become a believer. And when you saw last Saturday, 75 children came in, they had the parade of children and you saw those children all come in, you saw those proud foster parents that were there and they're foster parents that got awards and some of them taking on very challenging situations where there is nobody else to take care of that child and some of them really, you know, creating, you know, very traditional family sort of settings. Heartwarming program, just want to keep getting this on everybody's radar screen. So this was a very refreshing, I thought, update letter that turned into a, a real heartwarming letter from this trainee. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Bennett. Uh, I also would ask that the board close in honor of the people on this list. Today is the anniversary of the Voting Rights Act, so I, I think that's notable to bring out as well as Chris Rock's birthday. Regarding Supervisor Flynn's comment about having a, a discussion and a presentation on Fisherman's Wharf, I, I also look forward to having that and letting the public in on the whole process so that, I think will be beneficial out there in the harbor. With that, I think that ends our public comment period and we'll move on to our regular agenda items. That will bring us to Agenda Item 26, is that correct, Roberta? And that would be the Healthcare Agency Recommendation to Appoint and Reappoint Members to the Ventura County Health Plan, Healthcare Plan. Good morning.
Good morning Supervisor Parks, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm Karen Davis, Deputy Director for the Healthcare Agency. The item before you, as you mentioned, is to select new members and reappoint members for our Ventura County Healthcare Plan, the Standing Committee. This committee was formed by your board to meet our public policy requirements under the Knox Keen Act for the Healthcare Plan. This committee oversees the quality of care review system and our grievance process. I'm pleased to ask for some new members for our committee. Dr. Stan Patterson, who's a provider at our Magnolia Clinic under VCMC, to serve as an alternate, alternate member for two years. Also Tracy Farabee, a new plan member alternate, to also serve for two years. And then we have some reappointments. Dr. John Fankhauser, a plan provider, to serve another one year. Charlene Matney, a plan member, to serve for two years. Judith Wiegand, to serve for three years. And also to ask that Cesar Cueva, who has been a alternate member, to become a regular member and serve out another one year. We really appreciate these people volunteering their time to serve on our committee. It's very important for our licensure requirements under the healthcare plan.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Motion in a second. Seeing no objections, that motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Our next item is Item 27, the County Executive Office. It's a recommendation to appoint Andy Belnap, Dan Goldstein and Greg Ramirez to the Tobacco Settlement Finance Committee. Good morning.
Good morning. Norma Camacho with the CEO's office and also staff to the Tobacco Settlement Program Committees. We are nominating those three members that you had discussed today. That's Andy Belnap, Dan Goldstein, Greg Ramirez. And all members or potential nominees have demonstrated quite a commitment to the, to serving our community at this point and we feel that they would be a very good fit for the Tobacco Settlement Finance Committee. We also recommend that the board approve Andy Belnap as chair for this committee, as well as Dan Goldstein as vice chair. And if you have any questions, I can answer them at this point in time.
I do have one question. Is it, uh, is this the normal procedure then that the board picks the chair and vice chair as opposed to the committee itself choosing?
Yes, yes, this is part of the bylaws of that committee.
Okay, thank you. Part of the bylaws, it's the way to go then Supervisor.
I think we, we have a lot of, many good people there on the list and I'd like to make the comment that Andy Belnap will do an excellent job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Thank you. Thank you. A motion in a second and seeing no objections, that passes. We are fortunate to have these people volunteering.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
And I'd like to commend Norma Camacho, who has labored long and hard on a very difficult assignment for several years and it now is running so smoothly. I think that people forget how difficult this was when we first set it up and the ability to get quality people to serve and to do this and with the harmony that we've had. And Norma's also taken on new assignments in our office in the budget area, but is also stepping in to be part of the transition team for the Library District. So, thank you, Norma.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I know we did end up reducing the amount of administrative costs for the tobacco settlement funds and it's nice to see that it's flowing smoothly and we don't need as much administration. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to Item 28 then, the reappointment to the Ventura County Employees Retirement Association.
Move your recommended action.
Motion in second, seeing no objections, that also passes. We'll move right on then to Item 29, the recommendation of Supervisor Bennett and Supervisor Long regarding ordinance repealing an ordinance.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to start off by letting the board know I'd, I'd like to have, add one more action item to the motion. There are two recommendations right now. One is to introduce and read in title only the, the proposed change. The second is to direct the CEO to modify the administrative manual to reflect the changes as approved by the board. But the third would be to ask the CD, CEO to direct whatever, whoever is the appropriate staff to examine the per-page copying charge and report back to the board with as accurate a calculation of that per, per-page copying charge as possible before the ordinance actually takes effect, which would be 30 days from the second reading. Is that correct? To be 30 days from the second reading, assuming that, that, that we actually do make a change. But there have been some questions raised about that per, per-page copying charge. I think it makes sense for us to make sure that we have that accurately. This, uh, this issue, as I mentioned in the letter, it came before us last fall as part of an overall review of our administrative manual. There were many things that were being reviewed and that this was, was one thing that staff was trying to do. The fundamental question is, uh, you know, and I, I think that we certainly tried to identify that that the, that the fundamental question being, to what extent should the taxpayer subsidize an individual's access to government records versus to what extent does an attempt to recover any of these costs associated with that request create an inappropriate barrier to the access of those public records? And there's, there's, you know, there's a public policy issue there and we're trying to balance both of those things. This policy is a policy that amends where we are now and I believe it airs on the side of public access. At the same time, I think it tries to have in there some safeguards for things that I think the taxpayers would appropriately want us to have safeguards on, which are people that make excessive requests of staff time, excessive requests. We have had um, a couple of issues where requests have come in for over 100,000 pages of documents. It becomes a significant expense for the taxpayers just to get all of those documents put together. So somebody paying the per-page copying charge is still many, many expenses that a department oftentimes has to carry with regards to this. So the idea here is that the first two hours of retrieval and the copying time would be completely free to make sure that the average citizen that comes in can not be, not feel like that is a burden or a barrier. But when people come in, and we have a number of people come in who want government records for their private profit, for businesses that they run. We have people come and ask for all of our vendors. We have people come and ask for information that they use in many ways from that standpoint. We also have people come in and, and ask for the information as they're, they're getting ready to, to file a, a big suit. Once they file the suit, they get, they, all of the recovery comes under a, a different thing. And quite frankly, once they file the suit, we are allowed to recover all of the retrieval costs, et cetera. But so many of them request all of the information before then. And so when we get these, these big, large requests that go beyond two hours, I think most taxpayers would support and say that's a rational attempt to try to recover from the egregious ones. So with that, that's what the motion, that's what the ordinance basically does and appreciate Supervisor Long's interest in this too and turn it over.
Supervisor Long?
Thank you. Um, I, I, what we have, I think now before us is the opportunity for perhaps a common sense proposal. And what we thought the action taken in the fall really was to do just what Supervisor Bennett said, which was to really look out for the taxpayers' interest in those, those requests that perhaps went beyond um, common sense. And so it wasn't an, an attempt to hide anything. It wasn't an attempt to, to disadvantage or put barriers in front of the public at all. But I think with the proposal today that would give the, that two hours of time that there'd still be a, a per-page copying charge, but there wouldn't be the assessment of the staff time, is, is a good step in the, in the public access piece and brings common sense to, to the, an ordinance and, and a, a public access matter. I, I, you know, I, that's it. That's it.
Thank you. We'll cut you off then. Supervisor Flynn, you had some comments?
Yes, it, the, Joe Howery had an impact here. He wrote two, two essays. And the first one really asked for the second one. So that's what we're reacting here today to and I think it's a good idea. As I understand it, the Section 3 Authorization for Waiver is the operating part of this whole ordinance, is this correct? The $15 issue.
No, that's not the whole operating. That is, that's a, that's an additional thing that while we were reviewing this, County Council in communication with the CEO is recommending that we add, that was not part in there. But if, for, and it, and it's good for us to clarify this, this doesn't mean always that the fee would be waived if it was under $15, but it would be for those departments where it would cost them more to process the receipt of less than that. Some departments, they'll have a system where it'll be easy to process that. But you know, for some departments, we, we have a charge for $1.93 and they have to use more than $1.93 worth of paper and time and everything else. They, they, they can waive that. But that's an optional waiver.
But it, you know, the, the principle here is that uh, do as much as you possibly can as a government entity to make the government accessible. And it goes on from there to say the government is a government of the people, by the people, for the people. The people ought to have the opportunity to understand what this government is doing. And it ought not to be any kind of, I, ought not to be any kind of excessive fees to do that. You know, they pay taxes. They should know what we're doing. Some people don't have computers. There's some items on it, on the internet that they're able to access. So I'm happy that this is going the way it is.
My comments are, I'm probably the only board member that's ever done the Public Records Act on the county. And what was very nice about it was that I, I brought in my own scanner. I didn't have to charge any copying fees. The boxes of information that I was looking at were available to me and it was completely free and I, I gained a lot from the information that was provided. So it's, I think we have to put that right out there. This is regarding, if you want to take copies home with you, public records are open to the public to come and inspect. the public to come and inspect, and I think that that's a wonderful ability for the citizens to find out what their government's doing and get more information. Regarding the recommendation, my first thought was, if the system's not broken, you know, why are we fixing it? And we did have, brought forward to us a few months ago, an opportunity to change the ordinance, and when I had heard that you actually have companies or people coming in wanting 100,000 pages, or you need to go into storage, and it takes an enormous amount of staff time, I could see where something needs to be done, and it was broken in that sense. I like the change that you're recommending. I would suggest also that there's an opportunity, and I think it already does exist, but you may want to incorporate it, to, if you have a complaint about the cost, that you can appeal that to the CEO's office, and I think that already is the case, if you are concerned about the extra cost, or, you know, if there's an unusual circumstance that that makes it difficult, I think that allowing for that appeal to the CEO's office should be included, so I don't know if you have a problem with that.
As you said, you think it's already, is that already policy? Can they, can that be?
Yeah, currently, anybody calls our office, we check into it, and with your new provisions, it seems like the likelihood of the need for that is greatly reduced. I would like to say that, you know, our office can support this, and we are going to come to you in the spring as part of your budget, and do as we did a few years back when the living wage issue came up. There were costs that were of concern for the taxpayers, but nobody could quite quantify it, and so we kind of created what we call sort of an underwriting fund, where we will set some money aside for this purpose, and then any department that finds this to be an undue burden, one has the responsibility to record and report that, and two, then we would provide the funding in their budget, and then bring that report back to you so you'd know just exactly what's going on. And we may discover with this limit of, say, two hours, that the problem is de minimis, and that there won't be a need for any changes, so I think this is a good step in the right direction.
I know at the previous budget cycle, I had asked, it seemed like certain departments charged different costs for copying, and looking at trying to get a standard across all departments, some were 35 cents, 25 cents, we had different varies, some were up to 50 cents. So I know when you look at Mr. Bennett's request to come back with what the actual cost of copying is, we can also maybe take a look at making sure that that is across all agencies and all departments.
I support that strongly, and I think that's actually what we did in November, was an attempt to try to make it consistent, and it just didn't get communicated, you know, I mean, it's a big organization trying to get that all out there, but I agree with you, whatever we adopt, that everybody needs to follow that.
Standardize that cost.
You actually did achieve that, the problem that came up was really an error, but nonetheless, it focused light on something that could potentially be a barrier to the citizens accessing copies of the records. There's never been a question of whether they could see the records, it's a question of how much and who pays for the reproduction of those records. So when we come back to you with the report within 30 days, we will address both your concerns.
So this would not then charge for the first couple of hours of staff time, having to retrieve, get it, and you just pay for the copy charge?
Right.
And also gives an option to waive that fee, and I think that's definitely an improvement. We do have one speaker card on this, so.
May I just ask one more question? Can we give it, for instance, if someone comes in and wants three pages of government records, and the government records are there in the office, what will that person pay, if anything?
I believe probably nothing, because if it's only three pages and it's right there, the cost of making out the bill would be more, and it would cost the taxpayers more than what the cost to reproduce the record. Right now, we have an extraordinarily low copy cost compared to what you pay commercially, because we have such a large volume, and I think it's something like three cents a copy or less, you know, if you don't load in overhead and some of the other things that go with it, there's also a 35 cent charge, I think a lot of departments use that take into some of the county overhead. All of that'll be in the report that you've asked for, and we'll have it back to you, and then you can decide what level you want to set it in.
And that report will come back with the second reading of the ordinance?
Right, within the 30 days.
No, within 30, before the ordinance takes effect, I'm talking with County Council. I don't, this report's fairly technical in terms of them, we just need it before the ordinance takes effect, but if the, because the ordinance just allows us to set the rate, and then when they come back anytime in the next 30 days and say, this is what we recommend the rate is, we adopt it, and then that becomes the adopted rate. Then next year, we could adopt a new rate as costs change without having to change the ordinance.
But this will come back to us as a second reading?
The, but the per-page, the per-page calculation that he has will not be back by next week, is my understanding, that they.
Yeah, my understanding, your request was to have it to you within 30 days, prior to the ordinance taking effect.
Right, we have the ordinance, and then we have the rate, and they're acted separately.
This ordinance seems to be, correct me if I'm wrong, going in the direction of people having access to government records, and most of the time, quotation marks, they will not pay anything.
Right, if it's a small amount.
It's kind of confusing.
Or, for, yeah, your example, the three, let's say that the copying charge is five cents a page, that person would be charged 15 cents, and as Mr. Johnson pointed out, charging 15 cents probably doesn't make any financial sense for the taxpayers, because it will cost 50 cents to process it, so.
I just want to know that we're getting the spirit of this thing in place, right? And not, not all people, you know, really know to go to Mr. Johnson and get some help there either, so, that isn't in the ordinance. Go see Mr. Johnson if you need some assistance.
Well, just in general, when you have a complaint, see Mr. Johnson. All right.
I don't know if everyone knows that, but by the number of complaints we get, I think most people seem to know that.
Our first speaker and last speaker card on this item is Carol Dean Williams. Mr. Williams?
I have exercised the Government Code 6253A to, public records are open to inspection at all times during office hours. Every person has a right to inspect any public record. Very seldom do I make a copy, and it's 50 cents a copy. It's very unreasonable of you to use 100,000 pages, because that would cost $50,000. I am outraged at your example. When we hired our CEO in 2001, we identified as one of his goals, building trust in county government and confidence, that we had an open-door policy. I went to the Elections Department on December 8th, the day after closing, to inspect under the election code that your County Council hadn't filed an impartial analysis and was There's the breakdown, and I was told by the CEO, we don't like people that hold our feet to the fire, so they arrested me. So you need to consider this in discussing the policy. Inspection is free, under the Government Code. Inspection, not copying.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, and like I said, I was able to inspect a lot of documents for free when, before I was a Board member, and that was very helpful. Okay, so at this point, we have the, if there's no other comments, we have the adoption of the ordinance. Do we have a motion, again, this is repealing the previous ordinance, and it will be back to us next week for the second reading?
I'd like to make the motion for the three recommended actions, the two printed in there, and then the third one directly to CEO.
Second.
Yes, as amended then, and then we have a second, seeing no objections, then that will be approved, and we'll look forward to seeing that come back to us.
Title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Ventura repealing ordinance 4330 and establishing fees pertaining to copying public records.
Thank you, and that's a 5-0, a 4-0 with one absent. And the next item that we have, I guess, our 930, is our 930 item, this is a second hearing on the ordinance that was presented on January 24th regarding the Civil Service System Commission. Item number 22.
Move the recommended action.
Okay, I have a motion. And a second, thank you very much, and seeing no objections, that does pass. We also have our next 930 item, which is the St. Bonaventure 2005 Football Team. Where is it? Where's our football team? All right. Is the band going to play? Okay, we expect them to be streaming in shortly. And this item is going to be presented by Supervisor Bennett. I hear they won the Marmontes, is that correct? The CIF Division IV Champions, and here they are. Hi, welcome. Congratulations.
That area's for you, just pull that tape off.
Pull off the tape and welcome to the boardroom. Sorry we had to pull you out of your classes.
And since the boardroom's not full, the athletes can come up even, you can fill in those front seats too, yeah, go ahead.
Ah, these are. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Act 14. Good morning, there are seats for everyone, so please feel free, you can even sit along the side if you'd like.
Over here, go ahead, come on down.
And Supervisor Bennett, if you'd like to take this item, thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome back to our traditional annual St. Bonaventure award ceremony that we have here. It's getting easy, because we're getting the routine down, right, like everything else associated with this fine program. First thing I'd like to do is ask Principal Brother Paul and Coach Mack to come on up to, as we read the resolution. And all of us are very aware of the remarkable program going on at St. Bonny's. I just, I had to, as I was thinking about how steady this has become, I hark back to my days back in the late 1970s, when I was a football coach and coached against St. Bonny's, when I looked across the sidelines, and there would be 21 players, 19 players one time, and St. Bonny's in a very different spot, you're in a very different spot now, certainly from back then. So to see this program and to watch it go from those late 70s, coaching against it, to this, I'm glad I'm not coaching any longer in this situation. But it's a real pleasure, we try to get a certificate to each one of the athletes and all of the support people that you have here, so I'd like to read this resolution right now, and then ask Coach Mack if you'll help us like you did last year with the awards. So this is a, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring St. Bonaventure 2005 Football Team, whereas St. Bonaventure's 2005 Varsity Football Team's record of 14-0 and 5-0 secured their title as Channel League Champions, and whereas St. Bonaventure's 2005 Varsity Football Team's teamwork and leadership earned them the California State Championship, the number-one ranking in the Western United States, ranking in the national polls, and the CIF Division IV Championship, and whereas head coach John Mack and his credible staff led the team to their first Division I victory against Lakewood High, and whereas this was the team's third consecutive victory over state-ranked Hart High School, and whereas for the fourth consecutive season, the St. Bonaventure Varsity Football Team has been undefeated in Channel League play, and whereas St. Bonaventure's Varsity Football Team holds back-to-back CIF Division IV Championships, and whereas St. Bonaventure's Varsity Football Team is the number-one team in Ventura County, to be rated number-one in Cal High Sports State Poll, and whereas the St. Bonny's 2005 Football Team, award-winning staff includes varsity head coach John Mack, Andy Gibson, Josh Janku, if I pronounce, all right, Nathan Page, Chad Pearson, I think I'm going to get this one, I hope I get this one right, Tao, Tao Wei?
Tay Wei.
Tay Wei, okay, thank you, Sanchez, Bill Thirion, Pepe Villa Senor, Tim Gutierrez, and Dick White, and whereas St. Bonaventure's 2005 Junior Varsity Football Team record was 9-1 and 5-0, earning a Channel League Championship, while the 2005 Freshman Football Team record stood at 8-2 and 5-0 Channel League Champions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring the St. Bonaventure Football Team again, and recognizes their award-winning accomplishments, their dedicated leadership, teamwork, and outstanding sportsmanship. And I would like to make one other personal comment. I remember watching St. Bonaventure making this transition, and when you made that transition to your first CIF move, it was playing against a school that I was teaching at, in Orloff High School. There was an incident late in the game, and I was so impressed with the discipline of the St. Bonny players, and that tradition and discipline has paid off for you so much since then. So there are winners, and then there are winners on that level too, and it's certainly most satisfying to be able to recognize teams that win in both categories. So congratulations to Coach Mack and to Brother Paul. And Casey, if you'll bring down the resolutions, we will read the resolutions off.
The top one's yours.
Okay.
And you can read this one. And Casey can. And that's her. Yeah, the coaches, those are coaches. Okay. Here. Excellent. That's right, sir. Okay. Dwight Roberson. Alex Diaz. Matt Evans. Matt Lachuga. Patrick Hall. Matt De Los Santos. Blaine Erby. Sean Martinez. Jeremy La Sea. Stephen Miller. Doug Chavez. Angel Morales. Kyle Maddox. Trevor Line. Trevor Line. Isaiah Rogers. Nick Hillman. Michael Williams. Rico Stanley. Brian Bati. Chad Kurz. Paulie Bennett. David Johnston. Joseph Rodriguez. Andrew Doran. Andrew Sims. Gregory Christine. Josh Arvalo. Scott Emrick. Chris Perham. Josh Gary. Michael Young. Matthew Serrano. Von Datsi. Todd Leifis. John Capella. Elliot Moon. Ryan Medina. Ivan Rodriguez. Blaine Lewis. Michael Byrne. John Enoch. James Emma. Zachary McLean. Art Gilbreth. Shay Mihen. Alex Prang. Kishana Ballard. Amanda Vanoy. Eric Ravenscroft. Grant Leifis. Shannon Emrick. Got it? Thank you very much.
Anything else you'd like to say?
No. We need another orange tree.
Just two final things if I could, mostly to address the players. You work really hard, you work as a team, you've learned an awful lot about life besides just winning football games. You've got great leadership, you're really fortunate to be there. And we're fortunate to have a school doing so well in Ventura County. You make all of us proud. And when you get ready to decide how hard you're going to work next year, think about the satisfaction that all of you feel now. The other thing about next year, after shaking those hands, Brother Paul kept saying, he's only a sophomore, he's only a junior. I think you're going to be in pretty good shape next year, so I look forward to seeing you again next year. Thanks a lot. Take care.
Thanks for being here.
Maybe we'll see you next year. We have one speaker card on this item, and that is Carol Dean Williams.
You guys don't want to hear your poem? Where's your quarterback and center? If the quarterback and center could come up, we'll demonstrate the poem.
Mr. Williams, could you please go ahead? Your time is a-ticking, so please continue with your speech.
Clerk said I had two minutes.
Please begin.
Between ship and shive, S, come on, get on board, let's spell. Don't interrupt, don't worry, don't fuss and yell. SH, shake up or ship out. First Amendment rights, Cohen versus California in 1971, 403 U.S. 15, I recite. SHI, First Amendment, sharp and blunt, Ventura County public defender malpractice is blatant. Now, this is where the quarterback and center comes in. SHIFT, almost a four-letter word, but shift is football verse. How much time do I have, Madam Chair?
One minute and 10 seconds.
Clerk? One minute and 10 seconds?
Six, five.
Five, five seconds?
Two, one.
All right, our next item on the agenda is item number 30. And this is a recommendation from myself. It has a couple of points to it, but the main point is to see that the Santa Rosa Valley Municipal Advisory Council has made a fully-elected board. Right now, the Santa Rosa Valley MAC, as it's called, is appointed by my, I put the nominees up and the board approves the appointment. Talking with the Elections Division, to have the Santa Rosa Valley community elect their own MAC members would cost between $2,000 and $3,000. In order to do that, the area for which the MAC has jurisdiction would be expanded to be the Santa Rosa Valley Precinct. So this item is to approve a resolution to allow for the Santa Rosa Valley MAC to have elections, to have their jurisdiction expanded to coincide with the precinct that already exists for Santa Rosa Valley, and approve the election costs. I like the idea of being able to have people elect their own representatives. And right now, the five members who have been appointed include two that voluntarily said will just serve for two years. And those two members are Mark Burley and Ruth Means. And I would ask that we appoint them until after the election chooses, the people choose who should serve on the MAC. So this is a four recommendations, and the fourth one is to reappoint Mark Burley and Ruth Means, whose terms have expired. Looking at that today is the 41st anniversary of the Voters Rights Amendment, as well as looking at what, for example, the City of Thousand Oaks did. They chose to appoint someone to sit on their city council for three years instead of allowing it to go to election either in June or November. I feel that any opportunity that we have to allow voters to choose their representatives, we should use that opportunity. And it seems to me certainly the $2,000, $3,000 cost is certainly worth it. So I'll go ahead and make the motion unless there are some questions.
Just ask a question.
Certainly.
It would remain a municipal advisory council, or would it become a community service district?
No, there would be no formation of a community service district. This would be similar, I think, to, I think Ojai has a MAC too that's elected.
Where it's elected.
Right, but there are no funds that they oversee, so there's still just an advisory council.
I have a question. Looking at the cost, assuming those would come just direct general fund dollars?
That's my understanding. The CEO's office said that that would just be budgeted in the next year if we do approve this. And it would be obviously once every couple of years.
Any estimate on escalating costs? And is it, would it be a mail-in? Is it a mail-in precinct?
They are already a precinct. No, I believe they do go to the polls.
They go to the polls?
I might be in error on that, I'm not sure.
Would there be cost savings if there were a mail-in?
Well, I think the fact is that there are already an election out there, so it's just putting one more thing on the ballot, and that's why it's so, why it doesn't cost that much.
Yeah, okay.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, no objections, then we'll go ahead and consider that one approved on a 4-0 and let the best man be chosen, or woman, by the electorate. Thank you for that. The next item is the reappointment of Mr. McDonald. And Mr. Flynn, that is your appointment?
Move the item.
We have a motion in a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, and that's item 31. And with no objection, we'll deem that one approved also. Move on to items.
May I just make a?
Yes, please.
Didn't get a chance when the football team was here, but Santa Clara High School is making a comeback. And I expect them to be out here maybe in three or four years.
Let's put, we can put a bet on it for next year?
Not at the DIAS.
I have to tell you, just if I could, just a quick digression, but Coach Mack, at the end, when he made a side comment to me, he says, "We need another orange tree." And what he's referring to is when, the first year when Nordoff and St. Bonny's played for the CIF championship. Since I was teaching at Nordoff High School, and Jack Tingstrom was a city council member from the city of Ventura, so we put a bet, a Ojai orange tree versus a Ventura poinsettia plant. And they won, and so they came to City Hall, and I had to present them with the orange tree, which they have planted now, kind of starting, that was the start of this thing. So he says that the orange tree's now getting old and he's looking for another orange tree. So I would look forward to some kind of geographic rivalry bet at the appropriate time.
It is, you know, the high school is an outstanding high school.
It is.
And that one time, Santa Clara used to win most every title. And Santa Clara, in the last 10 years, the enrollment dropped. Now it's on the way back up. And that's why I think that we will have a great school, academic school, and also sports. If you were to survey the players out here, many are from Hofstadter. I just had to add all that, okay? But it's still a great school.
I believe, was it three years ago, we had Westlake High here? So I don't know what geographic amenity we could bet, maybe Brioch or something.
Thousand Oaks would be an oak tree.
Okay, all right. And Westlake High is in Thousand Oaks.
And Ventura would be a poinsettia plant. And I like the fact that oak trees are a lot more expensive than poinsettia plants also. We could work that out. Well, back to business.
I made that note.
Thank you. And Westlake High is in the City of Thousand Oaks, that is appropriate. So now let us move on to our next agenda item, which is, I believe, item number 32, which is the Public Works Agency Regarding SB 821, not 852 as it says in our agenda, on pedestrian bicycle grant funds. Good morning, Mr. Britt.
This is just a re, good morning, Madam Chair, my name is Butch Britt. This is just a re, reaffirmation, excuse me, of your previous part of your list. Some of the projects were approved for funding. Because there is more than one funding source, we have to continue to apply to most of these projects until we have the full funding for the projects. When a project is completed, we'll take it off and add others to the list. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment on this. This is looking at putting funds towards bicycle routes, among others. And my comment is, we are looking at, we have just adopted a transportation vision, and part of that vision was to have bike routes connecting the cities and the county. And that's something that the county has some jurisdiction on. And it's nice to be able to have a plan. And right now, it seems to me, as, you know, items come up in our districts, we make suggestions, but there isn't an overall plan of how we want to, for example, if we want to get the bike routes, which we have said between the cities, if we just did one a year, it's going to take us 10 years to get to that point. So I just want to put that on our radar. Obviously, we've already gone through the process on this one, but we may want to look in the future of having an overall county plan and use these funds towards that.
Supervisor Flynn? The Transportation Commission is looking at a consultant to come in and do just that, to look at a regional bike path plan.
Right.
And I, in connection with it, I've asked the RMA staff to bring out the old Regional Trails Plan that was adopted by this body. Supervisor Kildee and Supervisor Howard worked on that. And, you know, I think between the two, there's got to be some good linkages that we could look at to then see, how do we then implement the next steps?
Right, and that implementing is, funding is key to that. So this is an example of some funds that we will be able to tap in the future towards that. Are there any more comments?
Move the recommended action.
A motion in a second, and seeing no objection, that also passes. Right now, I think we can go to our 10:00 AM item. That's item number 23, and it's the adoption of a Ventura-Santa Paula Green Belt Ordinance and Amendment to Boundaries. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Debbie Malloy of the Planning Division. This morning, we're bringing the Ventura-Santa Paula Green Belt to you. There are two issues we have this morning with the Green Belt. One is that we are asking you to adopt it by ordinance rather than by resolution as it currently is. And second, we are revising the boundaries of the Green Belt. With respect to the ordinance, Measure A, which was adopted by the voters of Ventura County in 1998, among other things, recommended adopting the existing green belts by ordinance. The key distinction between an ordinance and a resolution is that you can essentially amend a resolution at any time, but to amend an ordinance requires legal notice and public hearing, and therefore provides an additional degree of transparency and additional opportunity for public input. And for that reason, we feel that that's a good approach. With respect to the boundaries, the Ventura-Santa Paula Green Belt was the first one of Ventura County's green belts to be adopted in 1967, and the boundaries were simply defined as the land located between Franklin Baranca and Adams Baranca. There were no northern or southern boundaries. You can see, we've kind of put northern and southern boundaries in here. It's the dark green lines with the vertical lines. Also, in the year 2000, the city of Santa Paula's sphere of influence line was moved westward to the western ridge of Adams Canyon, so that the area between Adams Baranca and Adams Canyon was within the city's sphere of influence and also within the Green Belt, which raised additional boundary issues. We worked together with the planning staffs of the city of Ventura and the city of Santa Paula to put together these new Green Belt boundaries. Basically, we looked at sphere of influence lines, voter initiatives such as the Hillside Voter Participation Act, area of interest boundaries, and parcel lines. And just to illustrate here, starting from the northwest corner there, we set the northern boundary as the Ventura area of interest, moving eastward along the area of interest, and then south along a parcel line to the Santa Paula sphere of influence line, moving south along south along the sphere of influence line, past the city of Santa Paula to where it jogs east, and then again, picking up parcel lines, moving southward to the southern area of interest boundaries. Those form the southern boundary of the proposed Green Belt, then moving along again, a bit of parcel line to the Ventura sphere of influence, moving northern along the sphere of influence to where it meets the Hillside Voter Participation Act boundary, moving east and north along that to where it terminates, and then moving again along parcel lines to meet the area of interest boundary on the north. And that was the logic that we used in drawing up these parcel, these boundary lines for the Green Belt. The city of Santa Paula has already acted on these boundaries. They approved them on September sixth oh five. The city of Ventura approved the same boundaries on November fourteenth. So we are the final jurisdiction involved here. This is an ordinance again, rather than a resolution, so requires two actions. This is the first reading of the ordinance. We're asking you to introduce it, read it in title only, and waive further readings. And the second public hearing will be held next Tuesday on the fourteenth, and we're asking you at that time to adopt the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'd also like to point out that Mr. Eric Lenz of the city of Ventura and Ms. Anna Arroyo of the city of Santa Paula are here, in case you have any questions on those issues.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions at this time? We do have a few speaker cards.
I just have a question on the letter received regarding Mission Rock Road and staff's review of that. The Green Belt has covered that area prior, so there's history there. But that is an area that has been industrial. I don't see any challenges to change that industrial use. It is zoned for industrial use. And there is, as noted in there, a question regarding their ability to do further improvements for the industrial use there when they go to lending institutions. Had that been brought to your attention before?
Yeah, we had conversations with them. Essentially, a Green Belt, anything that's allowed by their existing zoning, if they were not in a Green Belt, would still be allowed by their existing zoning after they're in a Green Belt. As you pointed out, they were in the Green Belt before and will simply continue to be in there. Their status doesn't change. But that does not affect what is allowed by their existing zoning. It's simply really an agreement between us and the cities that they're not going to annex that land.
I understand.
Thank you. That's for the public record.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and call our speaker cards. Our first one is Carol DeGidio.
DeGidio.
DeGidio, excuse me. Good morning.
Good morning. I prepared some little booklets that have a map and some pictures that I'd like to show you regarding our property that I'm going to speak about. My name is Carol DeGidio. I live eleven seventeen Pittsfield Lane in Ventura. I'm speaking on behalf of my uncle, Arthur DeGidio, his wife, Asunta, my mother, and my late father, who were the owners of the property at Forty North Wells. And our property is, when you get the book, there's a one acre parcel that was zoned commercial when we bought it. I'm going to give a little history of the property. And there's a back seven acres that was zoned agricultural. And when we purchased the property, there's a house on the corner of the one acre that is commercial, and that still exists today. In the back seven acres, there was lemon trees, and that was farmed. And in the course of the farming, they were determined not to be productive and dead, so we took those out in nineteen ninety-one. And right now, there are some flower farmers there. But they only farm a small portion of the property. Some of the land is empty. So that describes our property. It was, we purchased it, my dad and my uncle had a business, they saved very carefully and purchased the property because that one acre was commercial. And that is the acre on the corner. You can see it's outlined in orange. And when we got this notice, we found out that in nineteen seventy-six, that acre was changed agricultural, the zoning was changed. We were never notified. So you can't imagine our shock when we got the zoning notice and we noticed that they're going to put our property in a Green Belt. And so we called, we were very shocked. So we called the city and Deborah Malay spoke with us. And I said, "How can they put a commercial acre in a Green Belt?" And she said, "Well, it was changed in nineteen seventy-six, but we were never notified." And she says, "It's because there were a thousand, I guess people had changes and they could just publish it in an obscure newspaper that there was a notice, so that's why we didn't receive individual notice." Anyway, so to where we are today, I wanted to show some photos. We really don't feel our one acre should be put in the Green Belt or actually, you know, all of the property, but most importantly, that one acre, because we're on four, we're one of four corners in a very busy intersection, and it's a commercial area. And we didn't feel that our property appropriately belongs in a Green Belt area. And if you'll open the book, in the first page, and it's coded orange, so it corresponds to the map, that's our one acre, and it shows the house on our one acre and some of the land around it. There's no farming, it's just the house. And, you know, there's some trees, as you can see. And again, it's the one acre that juts out on the corner in the orange. The green is the agricultural property where there's some farming.
This is the corner?
That's the corner. And it's orange, it corresponds to the map in the front where it's orange, outlined in orange. And, you know, that's our corner. And then across the street, in the blue outline on page two, it has a picture of the retirement center. That's on the corner right across the street. And it shows, and on the bottom picture on page two, it shows our corner, which is the orange with the arrow. And you can see it in relation to the retirement center corner. You know, it's just to try and give you an idea of where we're located and, you know, it's a commercialized area. And then on page three, diagonally to us, is the corner where the four hundred-plus homes are going to be built. And that's in the pink in the front. And our corner, of course, is the orange. It shows the relation to where they're located. And then on the bottom is the last corner, which is directly across the street from us in the yellow. And that is commercial property and next door is a medical building. And actually, when we bought the property, there were two gas stations already existing, and even at that time, it was a commercialized area. So we feel it's really unfair to us, first of all, to have had our zoning changed and not have the opportunity, like I have now, to represent ourselves and our interests. And the property was purchased with, you know, hard-saved money by, you know, my parents and my aunt and uncle. And we feel especially the one acre being changed and then with the Green Belt, that, you know, it's an unfair situation when you have three other corners that, you know, are developed in an area. I mean, even down the street from, you know, on Telephone Road, there's a mobile home park. And so it seems very unfair to us. And so we'd respectfully like to ask the board to please not exclude our property from the Green Belt, especially the one acre that, you know, when we bought it, was zoned commercial and was changed agricultural. Pardon me?
Your main concern is just property.
That is our main, I mean, of course, we're concerned about all of it, but that is our main concern. Because, I mean, that was the reason that the property was bought and it was so appealing, you know, to my dad and my uncle.
Thank you for your time. And Supervisor Flynn, if we can let the public finish their speak and that you can ask questions, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other questions? Thank you. Sandy Smith? And you're representing the property owner, is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the board and staff, Sandy Smith from Western Benchwood, representing Judy O'Family on this issue. Would it be possible for me to bring that map up real quickly? Thank you. I think we're aware, if you're not aware, but the aware of the piece that we're talking about, it's the, if you follow the Ventura Planning Area, which is the green line next to the purple, it's the, in the very corner of that green square that juts out into the planning area. In a perfect world, I suppose we would, the planning area should be maybe a clean line there. I mean, if we're going to be looking at what's going to be happening with these in terms of the land use over the next ten, twenty, fifteen years, that square there is probably going to be something that's going to be tumultuous or be dealt with either between the board or the city. Just real quickly, first of all, as a person who voted for the Green Belt, I'm not here arguing against it. I'm here representing this particular piece of property, which I believe should, and if it were thrown to the neighborhood organizations that are currently doing a master plan in that area, I'm sure that they would come up for some use if it were in part of the public process of being planned right now. It was excluded from the neighborhood plans because it was in county and also in the Green Belt for that purpose. But if it were being planned, and you can look at it right now, it's surrounded by uses, the corner, it's a lit intersection with uses in all three corners. And one of the corners, if you'll note, there's a project of about four hundred homes that has received partial allocations and is going to be coming through the process right now. So all four of those corners will be developed. Again, this particular piece really should be excluded. I don't want to belay the thing too much, other than to say that I believe that if this were to go before the city now, and we were aware of this fact, we became aware of this particular project late last week, so we didn't have the opportunity to work with the city on it previously. My sense is that we have the opportunity to have some time to work with the city on this. This would be something that the city in themselves would request to this board that be excluded, but we weren't given that opportunity. So in addition to their request to exclude this, we would request the opportunity to have this piece be part of the city's planning process right now, so that they could look at this as a neighborhood, as a possible use, given the nature of the other uses around the property. So with that said, any questions?
I just want to thank you. I know the city of Ventura has been very strong in upholding the Green Belt and appreciate that.
And I think one of the reasons why we're able to do that is because when you have pieces like this that are going to be problematic over time, this is one of those that's going to, you know, is going to come back at some point. I think the purpose of a Green Belt is to try to identify properties where there won't be pressures for growth as much as possible and where there really won't be pressures to annex properties over the long term or the medium-long term. And I think clearly, with the plans that are going forward with the city of Ventura right now, this is a piece that's going to keep popping up, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. Any questions? Okay, we'll go on to our next speaker, and that is Tom Finnegan?
Tim.
Tim, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's probably my spelling.
No, it's my eyes. Your spelling's great. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy, very much for, I know you talked to Mitch Kahn about the issue on Mission Rock Road. Been a property owner, been out there for about fifteen years. And when I first received this, I was kind of confused, only because I was having a hard time finding the ninety-acre Mission Rock Road community inside the Green Belt. And I think the issue that came up for me was what it actually means. Mission Rock Road, the community's been there for about fifty years. If I was just a layperson coming in trying to understand what the Green Belt means and I drove down Mission Rock Road and inside of it found a ninety-acre industrial park, I would start to think the Green Belt didn't necessarily mean much. So I guess probably what I'd be asking for is if somehow the boundary could be set inside there. So one, you know, it'd be clear for the future, if anyone is looking at a map, to know that, you know, this is a Green Belt area around it, and there is an industrial park down there of ninety acres, which isn't a small park. I don't think in the near future, we're going to be annexed into any city. We're not near enough to Santa Paula and we're not near enough to Ventura. And as a community, we, you know, would like that. It would benefit our infrastructure quite a bit and stuff, but, you know, we're there. I don't think we're going to go anywhere. I don't think it's the intent of the county to do that. And I'm a strong supporter of the Green Belt. I think it's a great thing, but I think when we start to bring confusion into it in any way, shape, or form, it's not just a cost to me. I mean, I had to bring an attorney in to kind of explain what was going on. I hired a land use company to explain it to me. And the uncomfort I have is that, you know, it's been a cost to me and that's okay. But the cost will end up being at the county all the time, and an appraiser goes out to try and understand it. Someone comes in to talk about what the Green Belt is and they find out that there's a ninety-acre industrial park setting in one. I don't know, I know that's not the intent of the Green Belt. I know that we wouldn't be there if we didn't start out fifty years ago. But my concern is just that, you know, if we're going to call something a Green Belt, that we take an effort to make sure it's clear to everybody, because the intent is that a Green Belt and its boundaries be clear for what it is. So my request is somehow on a map, that we somehow inform the public that this ninety acres exists and that it is an M-three industrial park. So that's, I think the issue of whether it's a Green Belt around it or anything else is not important, it's just I'm more concerned with the confusion in the future. And again, I think the confusion will be here at the county and having to answer to banks or anything else if someone's trying to get a loan, and the appraiser's going to have to state on it, "It's in a Green Belt." And so the bank's going to want to know what that means if you've got a conditional use permit. And a bank calls here and it gets misexplained to somebody and they go, "What happens when the conditional use permit's over and I've heard it explained like this, you could turn back into lemon orchards?" Well, that's not the case. It's never really been a policy. But it could just be a constant confusion. So my request is somehow to have it clarified on a map, so it isn't a confusion to the county or anyone else in the future.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
And our last speaker on this is William Key, a Sulphur Mountain resident. Good morning.
You know me from before. Doppler radar. What I'd like to say is, the line that you have on your map there is not very definitive, because I was told it follows the ridge of Sulphur Mountain. Now, the county themselves, on their own maps and everything, have a definite line, and that's the Rancho Xmission line, which is on the bluffs on the south side of Sulphur Mountain. And I tried to point out to people, if you want to be able to figure out, it's like the last gentleman. It's not the definitive line running the ridge line now. What was established up there, I don't know. We are all people on the north Sulphur Mountain Road, which is mostly just called Sulphur Mountain, and we also have East Sulphur Mountain Road. They are all residents by the mail to post office department of Ojai. Our school district sits all's in there. We have problems with the election department. I was put into Bridge School District for voting about three or four times. One time, I was in the Oxnard Union School District and Mesa Union School District. And for people that come up there, and a lot of those properties also are split in half if they use the ridge. If you use the Rancho Xmission line, you've got a definite line that the county uses themselves to measure everything off of, because we've helped them out, because they go out off of our property to get on the bluffs to use those for surveying all over the county, the markers out there. No objection to the Green Belt. We were put in that, probably by Mr. Flynn here, back in the late seventies or early eighties, when we were defined from one, five, and fifteen acres to forty and eighty-acre designations up there. Any other questions? I didn't bring a map with me, I forgot it. But if you want a definitive line, or you'd like to come up and take a look, I can show you from there.
Thank you.
If I can see from the top of the one eighteen in Simee Valley to up towards Red Mountain and all that area up in there.
Especially on these beautiful, clear days, you really get a good view. Well, thank you for your comments, and we'll ask staff about that. I would imagine that they, we have such sophisticated.
But you would have a definitive line that the county surveyors use all the time.
Absolutely. We do have some pretty sophisticated GIS now that can get you down to the parcel level, so I'll ask staff about that.
That's the only problem I have with it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question for staff now, based on this gentleman's, can you respond to the issue the gentleman raised about the boundary line?
Sure, I only have two copies of this. Can you use the other? Oh, how do you? Think I can figure out how to make this work, because I do have maps with parcel lines on them.
So you do have it down to the actual parcel line?
Yeah. I can depict the parcel lines here.
For the northern boundary.
Here we go. So it is well detailed.
Okay, you can see, you can see the Rancho Xmission line, which is the relatively straight line that proceeds.
But it cuts parcels.
This line here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we could have used that. The one thing we can't do is lap over into the Ojai area of interest, because we've been given, we've been told that if a Green Belt goes into any other jurisdiction's area of interest, then they must also be a participant. So we can't go north of that, although we could go south of it. So it would be possible to bring the boundary down along the Rancho X-Mission line here, and then this whole area here would not be in the Green Belt. Alternatively, we could kind of jag the line along the various parcel lines here. You know, either way, we had made kind of a decision to say, we're going to go with the area of interest, because that does mark the northern boundary of where we can go. We can't go past that, otherwise we have to bring Ojai into it. And that was a decision we made, but certainly it's open to discussion.
Do you feel like that's a clean, clear, defensible line, the area of interest line?
Yes, because that defines where, you know, the area, that the City of Ventura and the City of Santa Paula, which are the other two signatories to this agreement, that defines where they have jurisdiction, for lack of a better word. And it would, and our belief would kind of leave these areas kind of out there hanging. You know, it's not like there's any immediate rush for any of these areas to annex into any adjacent cities, so, you know. And again, we used the area of interest line along the southern boundary, and that also, as you can see, that doesn't match parcel lines. Personally, my preference would be to have the area of interest lines match parcel lines. I think that would be handy, but then parcel lines get altered, too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we went with the area of interest--
GIS, with a GIS, it would be easy to keep up with, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we can cert, you know, that, well, it would just take time and staff effort to revise the area of interest boundaries. And again, since parcel boundaries are malleable and tend to change fairly rapidly over time, that might not be a very good idea. But that was our, that was our logic. That defines the area within which the Cities of Ventura and Santa Paula have an interest.
Great, thank you.
And it's already a legal description, the area of interest. But it is interesting to see that some parcels are in more than one area of interest, or some portions of that parcel are in a different area of interest. And this may be a good discussion for LAFCO also to look at.
There's always a great deal of tension between parcel lines and other boundaries which may follow geographic or other kinds of logic.
When you have different criteria which accompany the area of interest applying to the same parcel, it can get confusing. So it seems where we can, we should try to work towards having them be with the parcels. And when parcel lines change, the area of interest needs to reflect that, too, I would think.
I'm a great fan of parcel lines. I'm a lone parcel lens.
Do we have any comments on this item? That was all our public speaker cards.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah, the, thank you. And I appreciate the people coming down and pointing some things out, particularly the gentleman in Sulfur Mountain in terms of that. I think that in the long run, that's a legitimate issue that you point out in terms of that line. But I think the appropriate time for us to do that is if, you know, if and how we decide to adjust those area of interest lines. Because I think as you look at the map, it was pretty clean to go to this southern boundary and the northern boundary and just go to the area of interest lines on those two boundaries. It's where I think I would keep that. With regards to the, to the other request, particularly the one on the Ventura side that I'm referring to with that property, I would encourage the Board to respect the process of the, of the Green Belt process as it's moved forward. We are, we let the two cities get together. They work out what it is that they want to do. They adopt it. Then it comes to us. And I think the fundamental question is, do we intend to be doing something there? And I don't think there's any question, we are not planning on doing something in this, in this property. The appropriate place for that change to take place is if the City of Ventura decides they want to do something. I don't think it would send a healthy message if we're the ones saying, well, we want to take that out of the Green Belt, implying, you know, because what the Green Belt does is it does not stop anything from happening. It just, it is simply an agreement, for example, with the bank loan, et cetera. It doesn't change the zoning. It's just an agreement that we're, that we don't, for the foreseeable future, intend to be, for the cities, intend to be annexing that property in and intend to be doing that. If the city wants to change its mind on that, and they want to change where they are on the Green Belt, they certainly can do that. And so I think that's the appropriate place for that to happen, and appropriate place for that to lead on. We are following the SOAR boundaries, and we're following the hillside preservation boundaries. I know LAFCO, and with two, I don't have to tell two supervisors here, but LAFCO has tried to be very clear about following those, those voting boundaries as they're establishing this. So as much as I certainly appreciate the comments that have come in, I would encourage us to go forward with the Green Belt agreements as they are. The other thing I would point out, the City of Ventura, I think, has done something fairly remarkable in Ventura County. They have adopted, with Councilmember Smith's participation, they have adopted a general plan recently that said, we first want to try to meet our growth needs with infill. And that is what they, that's what they're really trying to focus on. Now, at the same time, they also have a project that they're talking about out on Wells Road. It'll be interesting to see what happens with that. But with that, I would certainly make the motion--
May I just ask a question?
Supervisor Flynn?
Yeah. The, as I understand it, you, the property owner for the one acre, and then you had 7.89 acres, but you were not notified of this. Is that your point?
Of the zone change?
That was a few years ago, right?
1976.
Yeah.
Forty years ago.
Thirty years ago, then.
No, the zone change from commercial to agricultural, Ms. Malley told me, was done in 1984.
Uh huh.
And we were never notified, because we are meticulous about attending public hearings. Whenever we find out anything's going on in an area, we like to know.
So that was 1984, that you weren't notified of that event in 84?
Yeah, we just got this notice when I called to ask her what was going on and she, you know, gave us the information.
It seems like with, with the other adjoining properties, that it, the logic is there, just simply leave it there like it is.
Well, as I understand, nothing changes except if they want to annex. It's the only time this Green Belt would come into play, so they still have the same uses that are currently available to them.
So their options are still open. Am I correct?
And if an annexation is requested, I believe it will just take, coming to the Board for a change of four-fifths vote, if I'm correct, to change the Green Belt.
They would have to have a sphere of influence change first.
Pardon?
They would have to have a sphere of influence change first--
Yes.
--in the city.
Right, yes, they'd have to go through a sphere of influence change in LAFCO and all that. So there are some steps to take, but the current uses and the--
They're not completely closed out, is the issue, right?
Although the uses that are currently allowed will remain. That's my understanding.
Just a question to staff on Mr. Finnegan's request on, you know, clear designation on this that says Mission Rock Road has been there for fifty years, and it is M3. We understand it. There appears to be a question whether or not that's going to be clear to the layperson or--
Excuse me, Board. Supervisor Long, Chris Stevens from the Planning Division. We were just talking about that amongst ourselves. And while we wouldn't propose making any changes to the Green Belt agreement, what we would be doing as staff is making a notation on our GIS layers that note, that show the Green Belt, and we can make a notation there to identify this. And there are a few other non-agricultural open space parcels, and make sure we have a clear notation for county staff, so when they're approached with questions, that explains that these are previously existing, and per the language that Debbie explained to you earlier, have all the full rights and privileges of industrialized owned property in the county.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions, then? Supervisor Flynn, you want to go on with your motion?
Yeah, I'd go ahead and move the six recommended actions of staff. This has been a fair amount of time invested in terms of moving this Green Belt thing, what, three years or so in terms of this? That's lightning speed for most land use things at the government level, but, so I'd move the recommended action.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. And also note that this already went through both the city councils of these two areas before it came to us, and they all approved it. Are there any comments, Supervisor Flynn?
If you could meet with the people here with the one acre and explain what you just explained to the Board and go over it in a little detail, I think that would be helpful.
And Supervisor Long?
Well, just to say that I think that being third in line to act on this, that we have to respect the work of the cities and the, and it has been long in coming. But that there, this does not close out. It really, it still provides opportunity to work with the city and whoever in the neighborhood, and to look at whether there can be a change to that in amendment, and that can be brought forward. So I think the process is just, we've been very good at trying to honor the process of what is the signatories to this agreement and respect the Green Belt.
And Supervisor Flynn, you had one more additional comment?
I just think if we were to try to change it, that we would invite the city manager of the City of Santa Paula, and he would change our minds immediately.
Noting, Voli Bopkowitz is here today. Good morning. Supervisor Bennett?
Well, I think we're done, if we're done discussing this outside of the official recording of the vote, I just have to make a quick comment to Sandy Smith. This reminds me of when John McEnroe became an announcer after, after playing tennis all the time, then he switched to be an announcer. So it's just, I had that thought, and, and, and the other tennis players in terms of how they reacted when he first, first was in that new role and stuff. So welcome to your new role.
And so I see no objection, then that motion passes unanimously. Can I ask, what other Green Belts, official Green Belts do we have in the county?
Let's see, starting from kind of the north, the northeast corner, we have this one, the Ventura-Santa Paula, then we have the Santa Paula-Filmore, then we have the Filmore-Piru, then we have the Ventura-Oxnard, the Oxnard-Camarrillo, the Santa Rosa, and the Tierra Rahada. What we don't have is one that is in the far northwest corner, which would be like an Ojai-Ventura one, and we are kind of intermittently working with the Cities of Ojai and Ventura to try and put some boundaries together on that.
Great. Well, thank you for your efforts, Ms. Malley.
I'm sure.
Title of the ordinance.
Could I just make one more comment? We're adopting this by ordinance, and the cities haven't, haven't taken necessarily the same step. And the first one we adopted by ordinance with the City of Filmore, worked hard on that, and it was significant, because it just said that there is a strong commitment to the Green Belt, and would encourage the cities that at any point that they look to revise or amend or change, that they would look at doing it by ordinance. I think it just reaffirms that strong commitment.
This is, there has been a Green Belt, right?
Yes, I think this clarifies the boundaries.
I just wanted to make, yeah, clarifies the boundaries that, you know, Todd Jail was in the Green Belt. I just want to remind you, and I voted against Todd Jail. You should have kept the Green Belt there.
Thank you, Supervisor Flynn. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item after we have the title read.
And ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Ventura adopting the Ventura-Santa Paula Green Belt.
Thank you, Iberda. We'll move on then to our 10:30 time certain. That's item number 24, and this is regarding the approval of the real property located at, on 855 Partridge Drive. Hello, Mr. Williams.
Good morning, Chair Parks. Members of the Board, Mr. Johnson, I am Steve Williams with Public Works. I believe your Board does have familiarity with the details, the basic details of this transaction. It has been before you on two different occasions. So today, the action is to provide final authorization for the purchase of the property at 855 Partridge Drive. All the legal notices for today's action have been published by the Clerk of the Board. And we have finalized now the purchase price at $12,124,941, which does include all the tenant improvement build-out numbers that we were talking about at the last hearing. And it also, and it includes a contingency of $88,800 for these, this tenant improvement build-out, which is yet to be constructed. We're anticipating closing the escrow upon completion of those tenant improvements or the interior office build-out. Probably we're looking at around June 1st or shortly thereafter for the close of escrow. So if you have any questions?
And this is probably a pie-in-the-sky question, but is there any way that we can be guaranteed of what the price is, how much it could escalate in the future? Do we have any kind of way of assuring that we don't have the costs of the construction increase?
Well, this is a, I meant to indicate, this is a not-to-exceed. The number that I gave you, the $12,124,000 number, is not to exceed. It includes a contingency, so we may be under that number. We will not be over that number.
You will not be over that number.
They will not.
Okay, we've got you on record.
Yes, absolutely. It is part of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
That's the final number, and again, it may be less. We reconcile the contingency for the tenant improvements prior to the close of escrow, and then we'll have that final number. But it will be less, or it will not be more than that number.
And we give brownie points if you come in under.
Right, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
We're anticipating that.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move the recommended action.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Seeing no objection, that passes. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Britt, sorry to keep you waiting. We'll move on to item 33 now, and that's regarding the traffic signals synchronization project on Santa Rosa Road, adding it to our five-year capital plan.
Thank you. Butch Britt, again. This item does require four-fifths vote on item number four. Just to clarify, there was a small typo on the agenda. The plan is detailed. We didn't try to impress your Board, but didn't want your Board to be aware of all the steps that are necessary to execute a project of this magnitude. It does need to be included in the CMP as a prerequisite to be put in the project, and that is a recommendation to coincide. One project would be delayed, the bike lane project on Santa Clara Road. Santa Clara Avenue would be delayed at least one year, possibly longer. And also, there are a number of financial transactions that have to be approved in order to get the project started, which is the item, item four, which does require a four-fifths approval. If there are any questions from your Board, we have met with Mr. Kevin Connor, who is the, the community rep, and explained the project and gone through it with detail with him, and we're underway with the project.
Thank you. And I appreciate, Mr. Britt made a recommendation that we bring in a community representative in the Santa Rosa Valley that can interface between Public Works Department on this project and the MAC and my office. And I think that was an excellent suggestion, and we're all feeling that we're part of the loop, and appreciate that suggestion, Mr. Britt. Also note, I believe that is not the, as I recall reading the report, the bicycle lane project that's being delayed, that's something that would have been difficult to move forward in the time sequence that you had previously had for that. Is that correct?
We did not have the funding for it identified, therefore, it probably doesn't affect the bike lane project in practicality, because there was no funding. We had applied for funding for it, but it had not been approved.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, are there any questions from the Board?
Question?
Yes, Supervisor Long?
Where in this do we remove the no right turn on red?
Right now, what they're looking at--
Changing the hours.
Is to make sure that, we did change those hours, you know, so it's just during the peak, but they need to synchronize, I believe, that intersection, too. So that, that will probably have an arrow, so that is, you know, when you don't want a bunch of cars there because of the synchronization, it won't be continuously a free right turn, otherwise I don't think the system can work. But I think that's in the future design.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on this?
Move the item.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Are there any objections? Okay, that motion is approved. Thank you. All right, we'll move back to item 34, got pulled. So we're now on to item 35, which is our correspondence agenda.
Lawyers?
We have a motion and a second, and then that is approved. So at this point, I think all we have left on our agenda then is for a closed session, and then we'll adjourn from there. So our meeting is officially going to closed session. Thank you. Will there be any announcement? You're not anticipating?
No, there will be no announcements.
No, there will be no announcements.